The Tuesday, July 14, 2020, meeting of the Eden Prairie City Council is now called to order. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, people in the audience who are socially distanced this evening for being here. Our council, I think this is our second in-person meeting again where we are socially distancing. We had a couple that were virtual, and then if you're just joining in at home or will be watching this throughout the week or weeks to come, thanks for joining in. Brief announcement about open podium. Open podium is an opportunity for Eden Prairie residents to address the city council on issues that are related to Eden Prairie city government prior to each council meeting, typically which occur the first and third Tuesday of each month during the summer. We just have one meeting usually somewhere halfway through the month. Open podium occurs between 6:30 and 6:55 here in the council chamber. If you wish to speak at open podium, please contact the city manager's office at 952-949-8412 by noon of the meeting date with your name, your phone number, and your subject matter. That permits us to be better prepared for you. If time does permit, after scheduled speakers are finished, the mayor will open the floor to unscheduled speakers. Open podium is not recorded or televised. If you have questions about open podium, please do contact the city manager's office. We do have this evening a presentation. Mr. Getchow, and then I'm assuming you'll turn it over to Chief Weber and Chief Gerber.
Correct, Mayor and council, I will do that right now.
Thanks for having us this evening.
We've got a couple of individuals here from the community of Eden Prairie we'd like to call forward, Robert and Spirit Otto, and offer up this commendation from the police and fire department. I'd like to read it for you. "On the afternoon of April 5, 2020, Robert Otto and his daughter Spirit were walking along the railroad tracks near Camp Edenwood and Birch Island Lake when they heard cries for help on the lake. They noticed a canoe tipped over in the middle of the lake and people in the water. While Spirit called 911, Mr. Otto sprinted to Camp Edenwood where he found some canoes on the beach secured with cables. He located a crate and used it to beat the cables until they broke. Mr. Otto then dragged one of the released canoes into the lake and used one of the broken pieces of wood from the crate as a paddle. He paddled to the sinking canoe and one by one brought two adults, a one-year-old, a three-year-old, and a dog into the canoe. No one was wearing a life jacket. Mr. Otto held the one-year-old to keep her warm while the two adults paddled to shore where first responders had just arrived. All five people were treated at the scene and did not require hospitalization. Mr. Otto acted decisively and courageously with little regard for his own safety in order to save four people. His quick thinking to break the cables and use the broken board as a paddle allowed him to reach the family swiftly. Given the ages of the children, the dangerously cold temperature of the water, and the fact that the family members weren't wearing life jackets, it was critical that they get out of the water as soon as possible. The actions of the Ottos were selfless and brave and resulted in the rescue of four lives. On behalf of a grateful community, we hereby award the city of Eden Prairie's commendation to Robert Otto and Spirit Otto." Thank you.
Thank you to the Ottos for your courage and compassion. You make all of us proud, so thank you so much. All right, towards Tonka. Again, Mr. Getchow, any brief comments first?
Mayor, I'll let Mr. Lifkin, who's been here on multiple occasions before, update you on the upcoming tour de Tonka, which obviously will be quite a bit different this year.
Thank you, Mr. Getchow. And, Mr. Mayor, council members, appreciate it. And I've got a site presentation for you here, and good evening. Thank you for having me here tonight. The event will be a little bit different this year, as we can imagine what's happening with all of our events in our communities. But we turned a negative into a positive, and so we'll make it a virtual event this year, and that will help us drive some money toward the food shelf that ordinarily wouldn't go there, so that's a good thing. And so I'll move along here, and there's a start of the site, our site picture from last year. That's what we like to see every morning on the first Saturday in August. And that was last year, and it'll be there again for us next year. So appreciate the patience on that. So there's our virtual logo for the year, and it's, we're not charging very much money. And for that, of course, what do we need the most of all? I've always got three or four of them on my dash in my car like you do. We need more face masks. So that's what you'll get this year with the rest of the money going toward the food shelf, and that's a nice thing that we can do for them. We're also looking at doing, provided the guidance from the Department of Health allows us to do, a very small, 250 is the limit, bike ride this late September. Again, just to give people a chance to get out, our phones and emails have been nonstop with people, "Can't we, how can we do something?" And so this is something, and we're hoping that we'll be able to continue with that. Those are the routes for that event. That event is Sunday, September 27, so watch our tourde-tonka.org website for more information on that. And also, the, just wanted a little plug, the community education catalog cover is there. We have a lot of Eden Prairie residents that are in Minnetonka schools and that get this catalog, and we will produce a catalog. Many community education departments have said no, but I believe it's the right thing to do. It's our number-one piece of marketing, so watch for that. A little bit delayed this year, but it'll be going out as well. I don't want to take up much of your time tonight for an event that's not an event, but I appreciate the time, and all the best to you and all you do.
You as well. Thanks for all that you do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I like your outfit, too. It's very fitting with the whole bike thing, too. You wear that when you're biking, I'm assuming. You should, yes. All right. We're down to the approval of the agenda. Before we actually have a motion, anyone have any additions? Or, Mr. Getchow, are there any deletions?
Mayor, thank you. There is an addition. You'll see on Goldenrod, we have a raffle that we have for the clerk's list. So there's a raffle before our next meeting occurs, so that was added to consent tonight.
Okay. I'm also adding, under council member reports, I guess that would be 14A2. Council, any other items? Is there a motion, then?
I would move approval of the agenda as amended.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Minutes, any questions on either the workshop from June 16 or the council meeting? If not, is there a motion to approve both of them at the same time?
I move to approve the following city council minutes. Council workshop held Tuesday, June 16, 2020. City council meeting held Tuesday, June 16, 2020.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Down to the consent calendar. Let's see, Mr. Getchow, you said this is the addition, correct?
Yeah, so it's on your annotated, so you would do A through I.
Got it.
The addition is A, clerk's list.
Got it. Any other items to question, to pull and have further discussion, anybody? Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Move approval of items A through I on the consent calendar.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. I believe we just have the one public hearing this evening. Mr. Getchow.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. That's correct. We have an item from the Eden Prairie High School, Eden Prairie school system for a planned unit development amendment for a sign at the high school. The applicant is requesting a concept review and a district amendment with a waiver to install additional signage at the high school, Valley View Road. They're proposing to install an approximately 103-square-foot sign on the south elevation of the building, and the location and size of the sign is intended to provide wayfinding and serve as a marker on Valley View Road into the high school. A representative of the school district, I believe it's with the sign company, is here to give a brief overview, add any additional information, answer any questions that you may have. The planning commission unanimously recommended approval eight to zero at an earlier meeting, and notice was provided to 148 property owners adjacent or near the high school.
Yes, come forward, I think. I mean, if you want to.
Yes, do we have the PowerPoint up? Yep. So I think the clicker is right there.
Good.
So, there we are. Hello, I'm Eric Tauscheck with Spectrum Signs, and ultimately, well, this is a good visual of the proposed sign, and also a day view and night view of the proposed sign. What the school is trying to accomplish is a lack of confusion when public enters the parking lot looking for the Performing Arts Center. Currently, there is only one sign for the Performing Arts Center on the opposite side of the building, so when patrons drive into the parking lot, you know, there's some brake lights and some congestion and some confusion. And so calling out the Performing Arts Center where you can see it before needing to make a decision, we feel, and the school feels, would be beneficial. There is a, another view from farther away, just so you can get kind of a better idea. And this is just kind of a summary. Like I said, there's just one sign on the opposite end, or opposite side of the building. They'd like to install a permanent sign, an illuminated permanent sign, that would decrease vehicle confusion in the parking lots. The goal is to amend the existing PUD sign plan to increase the total amount of square footage allowed for signage along the total, along with the total number of signs permitted by one. And then this is some details of the request. Total allowable signage area from 260 square feet to 371 to allow for the proposed sign. They increased total number of permitted wall signs from six to seven. This is just kind of an overall site plan of existing signage. And that's about it for my presentation. Hope that's okay.
It's okay. You did well. Council, any questions of the proponent before we go to staff?
Can you go back to that first slide design?
I hope it'll let me.
That's fine, thank you.
Oh, there's the first one. Oh, there's the one. There we are.
Thank you.
Okay.
That's it?
Yeah.
All right. You're a funny guy.
You just want to make them go through the slides.
It's not a mask.
You passed. You got back to it. Yay! No, we, I appreciate all council members' questions. Thank you so much. I had one of staff just about the backlighting of that sign. I, by the way, completely support this, and in fact, school district, if you're listening, we're one of the only cities in the state, well, we're rare, that 95% of our residents are shared by the city and the school district, so that adds just tremendous community value. And so this is the center, you know, the high school building of this community spirit that we have, and if there was wayfinding potential to have this sign, it wouldn't say performing arts, but that concept, if you needed in other locations, you know, as long as it's not impeding or affecting or negatively neighboring houses, I would be thoroughly supportive of it. So that's the only thing I want to ask. There's just a couple houses across the street from this. I'm assuming it's not like the Viking Stadium on, you know, 494 that lit up an entire town across the road. I mean, this is not going to impact, or if it did, could it be turned down slightly or that kind of a thing?
Yes, Mayor, it's my understanding that it will not have an impact on the neighbors. I think there is quite a bit of distance. I mean, the Vikings analogy is, I mean, that's such a huge, it's huge.
They've got distance, too, but they have bright lights.
You know, I don't know if our city planner has anything to add. She's here tonight, and she worked on the application, so I'm not sure if anybody weighed in on that issue.
Good evening, mayors, mayor members of the council. That same question came up during the planning commission public hearing. There was a resident who had some concerns, and there was a conversation about the fact that it is diffused light, it's backlit, and it's diffused, and it is quite a distance from the existing residential homes. As a part of the building permit or sign permit application, we will get a photometric measurement as well.
Good to hear that. That's my only concern occasionally, when we approve something that looks amazing in picture form, and then when it gets up, it's something that we didn't envision, and I'm thinking of down on Franlow and Eden Prairie, no, the Hennepin Town Road, the senior building down there with the huge bright lights right into the neighbors across the street. Still going on, by the way. I digress, but I think we need to fix that. But anyway, if this were too bright a year down the way, can we, can we go back to this and realstat it and just lessen it, or is that impossible at this point? Or would it be impossible at that point?
Mayor, members of the council, if down the road we found that to be an issue, that's certainly something that staff would follow up with the property owner, in this case, the school district on, and have some conversation.
Follow up with the other one, then. I'm serious. Yes. Councilmember Fryver.
Julie, can I ask you? I saw that 148 notices were sent out. I'm assuming there was no pushback of any of that that you've heard of, really?
Mayor, members of the council, the only comments that were shared were, as I said, there was a woman who came in and spoke at the public hearing, but other than that, we didn't receive emails or phone calls about it.
Yeah, there's two houses right across the street, I believe, and then what, the townhomes on the other corner, and again, they're pretty far back. And again, if it's not going to be like lighting up their living room or something at night, we want this. I mean, we want, as a community, people to know when that's our high school. We're proud of it. We want the wayfaring piece to be, wayfinding, sorry, I guess wayfaring's a book or something. Wayfinding piece to be, you know, easier across our city. So I'm totally supportive of this. Well, I shouldn't speak for all of you. I was gonna say as well, but I don't know that yet. Council, any other questions, comments? Anybody ready for a motion?
No, we got a public hearing.
Like I said, we'll do the public hearing first, and then I'll ask you if you... COVID. All right. I don't have it. I'm just saying it's the whole, whatever, environment. Thank you. You can sit down for now, and we'll have a public hearing, and then maybe call you back up when I think we might be done with you, though. So, as councilmember Aho so wonderfully pointed out, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that would wish to address the council on this issue?
Seeing none, I would move to close the public hearing and adopt the resolution for planned unit development, concept review on 66.6 acres, and approve the first and second reading of the ordinance for planned unit development district review with waivers on 66.6 acres.
There's a second.
I second that.
Now, with the first and second, we have to have a unanimous vote, just to let people educationally know. We often will have a meeting between a first and second reading. Typically, our meetings are two weeks apart, with some are their month apart, so, and this is pretty straightforward, so staff recommended we put this into the same one meeting. It does have to be a unanimous vote, though. All right, any other discussion with this topic tonight? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously, first and second reading. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Did he leave? Oh, there. Thank you so much. Yes, good luck with that. We like it. All right, payment of claims. Any items to question, have staff give a little more color or background to? Okay, is there a motion to approve the payment of claims?
I move the approval of payment of claim as submitted.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Fryver?
Aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Norrion?
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Case?
Aye.
All right, moving down to reports. One would think with the title Mayor's Water Challenge that I would speak to this and introduce it. I do know a little about it, and I remember all these years, Mayor Tara Lukens pushing this, and it's a great idea, and we try to get our community to conserve water across a set amount of time, and we end up entering our numbers into a contest. So, Mr. Getchow, do you, do you want to add anything else to that?
Mayor, I could add that typically, we have been involved in this for several years, and it's typically been in the month of April, I believe, so with, with COVID, it's moved to August, so that is new. But we will promote to our residents the option for them to go to the Wayland Mayor's Challenge website to answer some questions and take the water challenge, and then by taking that challenge, we, you collect the number of people in certain-sized city categories that take the challenge. And there have been many years where we've been in the top five, for sure the top 10, in, you know, I think cities in the range of like, you know, 15,000 to 75,000 or 50,000 to 100,000. So Eden Prairie's done really well with this challenge, and I haven't been onto the website to see what the challenge looks like, but every year, it's a little bit different in terms of tips to conserve water in your home or business. So, yes, we're proud to do this again, and the action requested of the council is to adopt a resolution supporting the challenge.
And really, just to be, really, just to be clear, it's, we want people obviously conserving and being more educated about that, but to qualify for our numbers for this challenge, it's really just going on in registering, and then you get the educational information. So I would encourage everyone listening to go out and do that. And then, Mr. Getchow, how will people find out otherwise who don't happen to be at this meeting tonight or don't listen to us?
As I said, Mayor, we're going to put something out on social media, on, you know, Facebook. We're gonna promote it, get it in the newspaper.
On our website as well?
On our website and the newspaper, so we're gonna promote it to the community.
Got it. All right, council, any further questions, any comments? Go ahead, I need a motion, then? Whoop, yes, council. Yes, absolutely.
So, part of this, are we going to, are we able to give suggestions to residents how to conserve the water, rather than just asking them?
I think it's on the site, but, Mr. Getchow?
The site has suggestions you should...
Yes, it does. Yes, councilmember Norrion, it talks about a lot of different ways to conserve water in terms of how you water your lawn, or, you know, conserve water in your kitchen, or, you know, washing clothes. There's a lot of really good, different tips. As I said, they change a little bit each year, but it's a commitment to doing some of those things to conserve water.
That's great. Thank you.
Thank you for asking. All right, see, we need a motion.
Move to adopt the resolution supporting the Waylands Mayor's Challenge for water conservation.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Mr. Getchow, we had tasked staff at our last meeting with coming back with some ideas for looking into some kind of a plan of action to address systemic and institutional racism across our city, including inside our government and commissions and staff, but also our police department was a piece of that, and our fire department, and we were going to possibly network in with the school district, and we have our own Human Rights and Diversity Commission that was going to be tasked with this project, basically, to come up with this plan. I know we have our chair here tonight. I'm assuming he's going to be speaking to this. Maybe.
Yeah.
Maybe not, but, Mr. Getchow, I'm certainly...
Mayor, I told him, I told him he's not gonna have to speak, but point of clarification, and I can certainly do this now.
I told him he did have to speak.
You can make him speak. You, you're running the meeting, you can do that. So, you know, I will say, I can do this presentation right now. I thought you had another council member report, but if you want me to do the city manager report...
I was gonna do mine last.
Yep.
Is that okay?
Yep.
Oh, you're right, I did jump ahead. Is that okay? Can you go ahead since I...
Yep.
Second mistake tonight, don't count, though. Yeah, if you don't mind, then I'll go ahead, and that will leave at the end of the meeting, then our math discuss... Does that make sense? I think that makes sense. I won't forget about you or about the topic.
All right, thank you, Mayor, council members. The mayor's correct. At the last meeting, the council tasked staff with coming back with a plan for, you know, dealing, obviously stemming from the George Floyd murder. And the immediate follow-up to that was a discussion, a meeting that I had with our HRDC, Human Rights and Diversity Commission liaison, Megan Yurks, and the chair of the commission, Greg Leeper. And we put together, kind of brainstormed for a while, and put together a plan of action that we then brought to the HRDC last Thursday that we're bringing to you for input. And I think the key is, it's the, the concept to put together a plan. And this slide's gonna appear twice, and to show you at the outset, it's a concept of HRDC leading effort to put together a report in the next six to nine months with the assistance of city council, city staff, possibly consultant assistants and community members. So if you think about many of our other efforts, be it in sustainability, our comprehensive plan update, we, there are experts in different fields that could bring best practices and knowledge in addition to our, our commission members. And I will say, Mayor, I think you said at the last meeting, you can come back with a recommendation that may or may not involve the HRDC. And my immediate thought after the meeting was, it absolutely should involve and be led by the HRDC. In fact, there are other communities in Hennepin County, in the state of Minnesota nearby, that, following the George Floyd murder, said, "We need to form Human Rights and Diversity Commission." We have one. So they've been doing some of this work. Really quickly, our, our initial brainstorming led to six main areas of inquiry that we would like to do, and you're gonna notice that half of them involve the internal operations of the city, as you mentioned, Mayor, the different departments, but it also includes our community. And you're gonna notice that, that there's some specificity to the city government operations piece, and probably a little bit more vagueness to the community piece, and that's intentional, and we received some good feedback from HRDC on that. So I'm gonna go through each one really quickly, if you don't mind. In terms of city emergency response, this involves a review, again, led by the commission and some assistants of staff and possibly a consultant, of our policies and practices in our city of emergency response, police, fire, and medical response. And we are going to research best practices nationally and get a feeling for how our partnership with our community is related to emergency services and maybe how it can be strengthened. I think, as you know, city council members, you spent an hour downstairs prior to this meeting, hearing from our police chief about many of our policies and practices. I think we'll find that we hold up very, very well nationally, but we're always looking for new ideas and new ways of doing things. Secondly, again, the mayor alluded to this as well, our programs, our programs, our city facilities, and our culture. So we wanna focus on the experience our residents have utilizing all of our different city facilities and amenities, and also explore possible issues related to, again, the accessibility, language, diversity of our programs and events. And again, we're gonna wanna get input from the community on how we're covering all of our city services and programs for every single resident in Eden Prairie. A third, recruiting, hiring, and retention. So obviously, this is very, very much a part of the internal workings of the city, so we want to do a thorough review of our own recruiting, hiring, and retraining. It also involves professional development as well, so we wanna make sure that employees can experience a workplace that's free of discrimination and have the ability to report any concerns without fear of retaliation. Now, the next three, again, are more community-based, and again, it kind of could mean a lot of things to a lot of people, and I'll give a few examples that came up at HRDC. But in this case, it's a matter of, in terms of race equity, what's, what's the connection that residents and others have to our community? How we communicate with them? How we get information out to them? How they receive information with all of the different groups? You know, again, I want to say, for sure with these last three, we could discuss how HRDC has in some way, shape, or form been doing these things over the past decade, but focusing specifically on a city race equity initiative as it relates to this, being very intentional and coming back to you with a plan, is something we'd like to do. The fifth area of inquiry would be... The fifth area of inquiry would be community experience. Again, it's having conversations and collecting information about the residents' perspective on their experience in the community, and that's very all-encompassing. That doesn't necessarily only involve city operations, it could involve many, just all areas of how you interact in the community. A comment that was made at the commission meeting last week was housing. There are a lot of, we do have a housing task force that's been working very hard, and they have looked at equity issues in housing. But the thought was, you know, we still need to do that in this plan. What barriers are there to housing that relate to racial equity? That's part of the community experience. And then lastly, which I think is pretty unique, is developing future leaders. And we have one of the most robust students on commission programs, and our students are going to be coming onto our commissions, including HRDC, this fall. And they have always been and will continue to be such a great resource for issues in the community. A lot of the educational programs that HRDC has done, partners with our students. So not only them, we obviously want to work with much of the youth in the community, but I think when you look at racism and trying to move the needle on racism in this country, it's each succeeding generation of people that can take that next step and improve. It's all of us, obviously, that need to do that, but empowering future leaders, we think, is a way that we can develop that. So that's a rather unique piece. So as I said, Mayor and council members, the HRDC, without getting into the details of the actual implementation, we did talk about how there might be subcommittees assigned to work in each area, and Greg did a good job of saying, you know, this is, we're kind of setting aside a lot of what our other work plan is, and we might be asking for you to meet more and get together more and be a part of discussions that occur outside of your meeting, so there might be a commitment that's needed there, in addition to the city staff that's going to make themselves available, all levels, all directors and managers and frontline staff that are applicable to this, that are going to make themselves available. And as I mentioned, we have many members of the community as well, in our community organizations, our businesses, our faith community, and our youth community that could help bring a plan back to you that evaluates all these areas and has recommendations for further action. And I would just add, along the way, we're probably going to have a few workshops with the city council and the HRDC, again, think Affordable Housing Task Force, between now in the period and when we would bring a report to you. So, Mayor and council, obviously, your direction on this is what's necessary to move it along. This is the point we've reached in terms of some internal discussions and taking it to HRDC, and at this point, this is the recommendation we have based on your comments to us at the last council meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Gettle. I had raised the idea at the last meeting that, and I was really careful saying that it's not enough just to say, "Let's start a conversation," because I think especially black people in America have heard that for decades. That being said, that is a place to start, but I want to go further, and it sounds like this plan has that potential. And I don't know, I don't even know enough about what the outcome looks like to say what I mean when I say something actionable, but it would be great to have something substantive that has lists of some actionable things that this community would do to ensure more and more and more, and this is incremental growth, but fast incremental growth, I think, because I think people of color and diverse people have waited way too long in our country, but fast incremental growth. What's our next steps? I couldn't feel more confident with Greg Lieber heading this. Thank you so much, you're an amazing asset in the city. I think we have, we're really fortunate to have so many great commissioners, but also our commission chairs, and Greg is a shining example of that, so thank you. Council, anything else you'd like to add before kind of sending Greg off to go and complete this task in the next six to nine months? Councilmember Nelson?
Yeah, I'm very excited about this plan. I think that it covers a lot. Hopefully, you'll get the community interaction. I'd also like to say, you know, though you can only have two council members at a time, but if you need to talk to one or two of us about some, you know, I'll tell you right now, I'm open to that, and I bet everybody around here is open to that on perhaps different topics or something. But you can't have three of us, because that's a voting majority. But it's time to do something, we should do what we can, we should celebrate where we're doing it right and fix what we're not doing right, and hopefully you can help us find that.
Anyone else? Councilmember Narayan?
Rick Gettle, as usual, you did an outstanding job. Thank you. And I'm sure you got a lot of help from Megan and others and our commissioners. I just want to say, thank you. I think this is, as you remember, last time, I was quite emotional about it, just reviewing all aspects of it. I think you touched every point, the six points that you talked about, and very impressive, and I'm glad that we are looking at all aspects of this. And one question I have is, should we put this on a website and share with the residents how that, so people know, residents know, we are taking action? We are not, many people don't watch us in the TV or watch our council meetings, don't come to the meetings, so that's another way to communicate, through the website and then social media.
Councilmember Narayan, so yeah, a big part of even having this presentation at the council meeting and not a workshop is to be very public about it. And so we will, we will put that on the website. I thought when you first spoke, you were going to ask me to go back to the first slide.
Just to look at it, not to talk about it, just to look at it.
Look at the first slide, thank you.
I did, I want to add one thing, too, because a lot of the initial conversation, probably in municipalities across the country, initially after the George Floyd murder, and it was on TV, was the idea of looking at police departments. And it's certainly understandable by what people saw in the Minneapolis Police Department, but tonight, we had a presentation by our chief, Greg Weber, and I'm in no way saying that we are perfection or that our police department has no faults, but we have a phenomenally good police department, under incredibly good leadership. And they do the training, I mean, time after time, or instance after instance, they've done the training that, I mean, I can't promise forever would never repeat a certain incident, but it seems like that type of thing never would have occurred in Eden Prairie. And I, I mean, I can personally attest to, I probably know personally, I don't know, 15 police officers, two of them as students in my classroom, I mean, they're just amazing people. And the way they're even trained, we just do something different from our heritage back in the 70s, and that is that we didn't have access to ambulances that much back then, and we trained all of our police officers in first aid and safety. And they would be trained to do completely differently what happened down in Minneapolis some weeks back. So I just want to underscore, we know, we're not in any way saying anything's, agency or a group is perfect, and we're going to be looking at everything, but I want the people of Eden Prairie to know that we have a phenomenal police department, we're very proud of it, we train, I don't, they are trained incredibly well, we fund them well with your tax dollars, I hope that you feel that we're spending them wisely, and we have amazing leadership. So I wanted to underscore that. But that will be part of what we will look at as well. And we have, I can't leave Chief Scott Gerber out in the back, we have an amazing fire department as well. There's always fun competition there, but they're both amazing. Yes, did you want to speak, Councilmember Nelson?
Real quick, one thing you didn't mention is, we've been doing de-escalation training for years. And that's one thing that they want other departments to start, and I think that's important for our public to know, is it's not just now all of a sudden occurring to us, it's occurred to us quite a while ago. And they do, everybody is trained in at this point and continues to be trained. And, you know, it's not the end answer, but it's a wonderful beginning.
And we chatted tonight briefly, I brought it up, that we're not in the slightest bit interested in defunding any part of our police department, but that doesn't mean there might not be additional funds needed to add. And maybe we do look at additional social work services or additional, some type of chemical dependency, or just things that would help our police officers become even better trained, but also fill in in those after-visit visits, that we may look at how our service models are being implemented. So that's a whole nother discussion, but I'm saying that our police department, as currently exists, is well-funded, well-maintained, well-trained, and I think they, I was going to use a word I probably shouldn't use, they implement well their jobs, so. All right, anything else, Mr. Gettle? Mr. Lieber, thank you again?
Thank you.
All right. The last item on the agenda, then, which I'm going to place a little bit out of order, was council member reports. We, on the city council, and probably no surprise to many, many people in the city, have been getting a lot of emails, voicemails, personal phone calls, contacts personally, not, they're socially distanced, in grocery stores, over the issue of mandated masks. Obviously, the publicity for that is just out constantly in social media and on the news. On top of that, in the state of Minnesota, three more cities joined the mandated mask club last evening, Duluth, Excelsior, and Minnetonka. But so far, there's Duluth, Excelsior, Winona, Edina, Rochester, Minneapolis, St. Paul, Minnetonka, and then two universities, St. Cloud and the U of M, will mandate masks for the fall. Because we've been getting a lot of requests for them, but also, and again, maybe as council members, we get different numbers, this is not about a numbers game, this is not about, hey, three-fourths of the people recommended this, that's not how we do business. I think we make decisions based on what we believe is the best for the people of Eden Prairie and public health, all of us individually, even if we disagree tonight, we're all, our hearts are in the right place, wanting the best for Eden Prairie. Nonetheless, for me personally, I'll just say that I probably have received 60 to 70 personal recommendations on masks, and probably 60 of them or so have been to mandate them, often from heartfelt people who have ill, chronically ill people in their family, or they have diabetes, or their grandmother or something, there's some connection that they would like the mask. And then the other thing is that as cities, as our neighbors, Edina and Minnetonka, Minnetonka joined last night, as our neighbors are passing these ordinances, it's in my personal mind raising the whole question of, at what point do we not want economically for our businesses to be out there alone? So I wanted tonight to not, to have anything come out of this evening's discussion, maybe possibly some recommendations forward, but not a vote or anything like that, we're not going to, well, we can find out in a moment, we're probably not able to pass an ordinance anyway. But I wanted to find out from each council member where your thinking is at with this, and then look at what next steps might be if the data begins to change. And I've got a lot of data that I'd like to, after I give you all the chance to speak, I'd like to share some. And as you can imagine, there's not only the United States national data, state data, there's county data, and we're beginning to get some Eden Prairie data that was not permitted for a while by the county, and now it's being freed up a little bit. So we have a lot of data to talk about and try to talk about trends. But before we dig into that a little bit, and again, I'll leave it up to you all whether this is the right time to jump into it or not, but I'd like to hear at some point, maybe now, from each of you, where you're sitting with this, and then we'll have a conversation where to go from there. I don't know how to begin this, we can go down the line, or we can just have someone speak up?
I can either start, or we can start over here.
Why don't you start?
Obviously, I'm wearing a mask, so I believe in them. I do think that there are advantages to the city to request people to wear masks when they're inside, especially in areas where you can't be at least six feet apart, and perhaps outside in large groups, because there have been so many people that have said, "Well, if I don't know if the store I'm going into people wear masks, I'll go to a city where it is and it's not that far away." There are a lot of people that have pre-existing conditions, or they have children or parents with pre-existing conditions, where they have more of a reason not to catch COVID-19 than just it would be inconvenient. Other households are pretty healthy, and they have the assumption that if they get it, it'll be miserable, but they'll get through with it. But I think more people have connections, whether it be parents, or whether it be children, or brothers or sisters, or friends at church, or whatever, that they would prefer to keep members of the society protected without us having to be closed down. And then if the alternative is to everyone stay home and not wear masks, or to wear masks and be able to go out about your business, I think most people prefer to go out about their business as safely as they can make it for the whole community. Now, that doesn't mean if you pass an ordinance that you're going to have the police going out and saying, "You don't have a mask on." But it does give businesses rights to say, "In this city, we ask you to wear a mask, and if you need a mask here, one is with our logo on it."
Thank you. Others? Want me to talk data for a minute?
I'll go.
Do you want to speak? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Like most of us, that we have received so many emails, texts, and Facebook messages, it's overwhelming. I don't remember last few months, in your other subject, we got this many community participation in this subject. So first, I want to say, I'm an engineer, I'm a data scientist, so I look at things very science perspective. I respect the scientist and healthcare experts' view, not an emotional thing. The science and the research presented has proven again and again that masks reduce the spread of virus. Currently, there is an exponential rise in symptomatic cases. That's what's worrisome, that you and I could be walking around and I may have coronavirus, I don't even know, and I may be spreading to somebody that vulnerable without knowing. In Minnesota, the number has been staying low, that's good news, but last couple of weeks, the rate has been increasing from 2% to 5%, it's jumping, just like another person. Then I looked at it, those emails that we received, into two parts. One is that people suggesting we should mandate the mask, people suggesting not to mandate the mask, the other is, people should mandate the mask. I can summarize that, and I want to review with you. There are, there are a group of people saying they don't want to wear the mask, saying it their right to choose whether or not they should. There are people who say it's wearing, wasting police resources, I think Ms. Nelson said earlier, that if you're going to do something, we are not enforcing possibly. There are, there are those who say that make breathing difficult, and I noticed myself when I put the glasses and the mask, it flog up. Yeah, I know, it's discomfort, I understand that, right? It does happen. People say, you know, it's summertime, that we go outside, and in a crowded, when you put the mask, it's very uncomfortable, sweaty, and many uncomfortableness. Then the other side is people who would like to wear the mask, wearing a mask protect, protect you very little, all the scientific shows, really you, it greatly protects others from you. They're wearing the mask, protect the others, not for you. And my thinking is, it's really to protect the voice of the left, the people are not able to speak, they're not able to voice, and we are able to protect by wearing masks. You know, we see last summer or so, we all together, signs all over the place, and that's really reflect, is in order to be, we all have to be as community, we have to protect each other. And again, it's not about you, it's about others. Now, I said, understanding all these things, I said, "What do I do?" So I analyzed myself and said, you know, we donate to Prop, Prop Shop, and other nonprofit organizations to help others. We give money, we give food, we give goods to help those people not able to do that. We volunteer to help others all the time. When elderly person come to a bus... When elderly person come to a bus, and I usually stand up and let them sit down on that seat, it's all about others. A disabled person, we try to help them, right? Again, helping others. So the question is, are we willing to sacrifice a bit of freedom, little bit, for others, that they may be, we save a life? Somebody else who cannot protect themselves, you are infecting them. Together, I think we are, I think we're going to make it, you know? We have a really good council members, and Mayor talked about our police and fire and our residents. I think we're going to make it. This is going to be, we're going to make the good decision on this. Then the question is, how the history going to look at us? How my grandchild going to look at 20 years from now, what we did? It's important, because it's a critical moment. To summarize it, to me, it's not a binary problem. It's not like this or that, yes or no. It's like a little bit convoluted. We need to think about the greater good, and what collective effort could do for our community. Think about our community, not think about yourself. I think it's the most important part today. I think any public space or business may have come to close contact that I think a mask will save people's life, truly save. And I think places like subway shops, or haircutting place, or nail salon, or somewhere that cup food, you go, and somebody is not wearing a mask, young person, and somebody vulnerable that may infect unknowingly, knowingly, unknowingly. I will not recommend mask mandatory when walking on a street, nobody around you, or on your boat and sailing, or doing something with your children or family. I wouldn't recommend that. I don't think we need to, at least none of the data shows that. The positive rate is going high, currently around 5%, like I said, and it was around 2% a couple of weeks ago. So Minnesota is picking up, and I don't know the Eden Prairie number. If we don't control the infection rate, we will be the same state as like California, they just shut down. And what happened? The effect is unemployment, the effect is the business, the effect is major economic disaster. If you let it go and finally get to that stage, if you let it go, Minnesota has to shut down again. That's the only way we can control, and I don't think we should get there. I believe the best remedy is wearing a mask, social distancing, and washing hands, just like we have been hearing since March. So that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Freiberg or Aho?
I'll go, Mayor, as far as. A lot of what was just been said is true, on a statewide basis. My problem with mandating on a city basis is that it should be a statewide scenario. It should come from the state government, not city by city. I had this same problem back when 21-year-old tobacco came up. I was not against raising the age 21 for smoking statewide. I was against it, though I was not on the council at that time, I was on the council shortly thereafter. I would have voted against it on a city basis, because to me, when you're talking about things like economics, when you're talking about things like shutdowns, all that has to do is with the state. Do I think the state will probably mandate it? Quite possibly, quite possibly. But as I look at it as a city by city basis itself, and putting the burden on the retailer, I happen to work, you know, in the environment of retail, and I know the type of confrontational situations that you're going to put maybe an elderly part-time worker on, or maybe a 16-year-old part-time worker, when someone says, no, I don't want to wear a mask, because there's not going to be backup to this. It's up for this, be the mask police in retail. That's the problem. If it's mandated by the state, it's not a problem everywhere. But when it goes this state, or city, but then Bloomington, no, Plymouth, no, Woodbury, no, you can keep going and going, it's a 50-50 split in the metro area, I would be against it on a city basis, though I would support it certainly on a statewide basis.
Thank you. Councilmember Aho?
Well, I think there's evidence that mask-wearing does help. I think there's also evidence that shows that it's not the be-all, end-all, and so I think that to implement it on a citywide basis and create, like Councilmember Freiberg indicated, and to create pockets and islands of masks, no mask, I think is problematic. And businesses and other organizations can implement that policy if they choose, and we've seen that in our city, where some businesses require you to wear a mask, and I think that's absolutely fine, they have the right to do that, and I have no problem with that. I think if people do feel that they are at risk and that they need to wear a mask, I think that's great. I think they have the opportunity to do that, and there's nothing wrong with that. We'd be happy to have them protect themselves. I think, you know, we do need to do absolutely everything in our power personally to prevent the spread of the virus, and to protect ourselves and to protect others. And I just, I'm, I think it's a little heavy-handed to mandate it at the city level. If the state comes down and says that mandatory mask-wearing is required, that's one thing, I think we'll all comply, but I am opposed to doing it at a city level.
Okay. Thank you. So I'm going to share a little bit about where I'm coming down on this, and then talk about next steps and what, where we might go forward if we needed to. So I don't have a personal problem with the concept of mandating masks, and I would be fine with it at the municipal level. I think there are reasons in behind both what Councilmember Freiberg and Aho said that makes sense, that economically, I don't think, I think it's confusing if you're driving around and you've got this town with masks, and suddenly you go into this town, and so I understand that completely. And I, that would be one reason I would be inclined, if in the next week or so, every city around us mandated masks, I would be inclined to join them, not just to follow their lead, but to simply, for economic reasons, be consistent. So I do understand that argument completely. My personal feelings around the whole mask issue has more to do with the practicality and the pragmatism of making it be effective. I think it's very hard to enforce, that doesn't mean we shouldn't do it. But I feel like if the numbers in Minnesota today are not warranting it, and I'll mention, I'll talk about that in just a second, and we believe there might be a wave two coming on, I'm going to make this up, but in the fall, as many people have predicted, the question is, if cities are mandating now, and they're using this tool in their back pocket, they're going to have to keep it in effect for months, six months, eight months, maybe more, as we go into wave two. That is fine, as long as we don't, we already got into the whole virus fatigue, and people started to loosen up and go out too early, and we see what happens with that. Could people get into mask fatigue at that point? And it just, there's, you know, too much rebellion. So my thought, based on looking at the data a lot in the last two days, is that I'm ready to enact the mask, the mandated masks, but I want to do it when the data drives it, and it might, anytime, it could next week, next week, the week after that, next month, not till October. So I feel like we're jumping the gun a little bit on it. However, again, if all the cities around us were to do that, I would go that path. There's three data trend points that are driving decision-making in Florida, Texas, Arizona, and of course, across the country. And a lot of people think it's just the cases, right? Just the number of, and of course, that's not it, and not that the cases are a direct result to more testing, it's just the cases are a result, that there's more cases being found. What is an interesting and much more cutting-edge, leading indicator are the percentage of the test positives to the total cases. Now, that's not a statistically significant number, if you think about sampling, because who goes to get tested? However, if you have 1,000 people that thought they might have been infected, that went to get tested last week, and 100 of them tested positive, 10%, and this week, 1,000 more people go, think they might have it, and 200 test positive, that's interesting. Now you've got a doubling of the infection rate in a sample that is consistent week after week, and that's the, one of the leading indicators that's being watched in counties in Florida and Houston. And based on those indicators, our numbers in Hennepin County in Minnesota are flat. The second indicator that people are looking at is a trailing indicator, and that's the two to three weeks later with hospitalizations. And hospitalizations are not only flat, but they're declining in ICU units, even as cases have been going up. So tested positive cases are going up, but ICU unit admittance and stays are slightly down. They're not significantly, well, they're down, but they're, I don't know what the trend is there yet. And then the third trailing indicator, about a month out, is the death rate, and that's falling. Now, a lot of people might say, yes, but if we don't get on top of this, because we can't wait, we'll be caught with the trailing indicators two to four weeks out if we don't act now. And that's where I'm supportive of it, if everyone, like a state mandate, if all cities around us, I'm, no way would I fight this, absolutely. Mandate masks and keep it in effect, enforced, for six, eight months if we need to. I just feel if it's going city by city, our best bet would have been to wait a bit. I don't know that we're going to get that chance for a couple of reasons. One is, there are some rumors that any day, including possibly tomorrow, that Governor Walz is going to make a decision, and he might make a statewide mandate tomorrow. I'll just lay this out there, if he's listening, which he's not. What I would do, if I were him, based on metrics, is I would set some metric bar trends and say, when any county in the state of Minnesota hits these numbers, it just kicks in the mandatory mandate on masks. The reason that he's running into resistance is you've got St. Louis County that has a .3 infection rate to total tested. I mean, they just, they just don't have cases up there. And so, and yet Duluth did pass the mandated masks yesterday, which I thought was interesting. But you've got outstate that is not experiencing this yet, okay? Then mandate it in the counties that are, Ramsey, Hennepin, what's Rochester? I don't know the.
Alstair.
Yeah, I mean, mandate it where there are these metrics to get hit. If we were totally free to be independent, so that we did not care what our neighbors did, I would say we ought to set those minimum bars. We ought to go back, and we still might want to do this, but go back to Scott Gerber, who's in charge of our, looking at all of this safety aspects with COVID, and go out and do some research and find out, is there a metric that we can look at in other states that when your ratio of infected rate over total tested, when that doubles in the last week, is, does that kick it in? When your ICU units become 10% growth in two weeks, does that kick it in? I mean, there are, this, it's not rocket science, but it doesn't take that much to use the metrics to figure out, and a lot of places across the country are doing that more and more and more. I don't know that we'll need to do that, because I think, again, whether the governor tomorrow, whether three or four more cities around us within the next couple of weeks. So here's what I would like to ask this evening for us as a council. We could actually have found out today, we could enact an ordinance tonight under emergency actions, and have two readings in the same meeting and pass this. My suggestion to all of us is we sit back just a few days, find out what the governor's going to do, find out what a few other cities do this week, ask Scott Gerber to go back, and there are some metrics that we're missing from the county right now. They could not tell us today that ratio, I'm not embarrassing them, sorry, they just, in the moment, they couldn't get us that data, I'm sure they haven't. We couldn't get from them today at the last minute, that ratio of the tested positive to the total number. We want that number. Also, for the longest time, individual cities were not being given their COVID numbers, and they weren't being posted, so they didn't want to embarrass hotspots of cities. But then cities that have their own health departments were going to the state directly and getting their numbers. So suddenly, as you saw last week, Edina's numbers got broadcast, and then everyone's like, where's Eden Prairie's numbers? So we'll be getting those numbers in the next couple of days. And so when we learn, what we do know, by the way, there have been around 315 or so tested positive cases in Eden Prairie so far, and that's only a gain of 100 in the last six weeks. So we have a very slow rate of growth in Eden Prairie, just to let everyone know that. In terms of kicking in the mandate to mandate masks, if you look at the other hotspots of the country, we are not a hotspot. That doesn't mean that if we don't take precaution now, that it would be a good idea. And the other thing is that the places in this country that did shut down early, that did do mandates, that did do the aggressive confronting this COVID, are opening up quicker, and their economies are doing better. That's the key here, that, that's why I love this, because it ties in, it's a Republican and Democrat thing, right? We want the economy to get going again. If we want the economy to get going again quickly, then let's mandate masks, let's do the social distancing, let's cut out the large gatherings, let's do the things we need to do so we can open up everything and get the economy going. So what I'd like to ask us tonight, and there's three votes here at least, but maybe there will be four or five, depending on the data, and you all can do what you wish, but we, at a moment's notice, I can call an emergency meeting for the next day, and we will get together in some format, in person or virtually, and we, if we want to enact an ordinance that would mandate masks in Eden Prairie, we can do that on a 3-2 vote, a 4-1 vote, or a 5-0 vote, and we can immediately, under emergency powers, we won't have to wait for the second reading, it can be enacted. Maggie, you can just nod, or you can check, yeah, thank you so much. We checked with our attorney, and we have all the legal rulings on this. So what I would like to wait to do is find out what the governor does tomorrow, find out, get more data, have Scott maybe get back to us and get it through Rick, Mr. Getchow, get us some data that shows what the trends are currently, and maybe some benchmarks of what's happening across this country, that when, we've noted that when counties or places in the country have a doubling of the ratio between the test positive and the total cases, that triggered something. That's the kind of thing I want to know. In the meantime, we'll watch what our neighbors do, and at some point, and this is where I'll use my mayoral emergency powers, if I feel like now is the time, and I'll watch it carefully, we're getting a lot of advice from our residents, I'd like to put a hold on it for about a week, but we have the power now to do it if we need to, and we'll just find, we'll learn a lot more the rest of this week. And we'll, I'll be talking to Mr. Getchow daily. Individually, you can feel free to talk to me, I won't share with each of you what the other people say, because of open meeting law, but absolutely, if you want to weigh in on opinion beyond this, please do that. Councilmember Freiberg?
Mayor, I was just going to ask, you mentioned something earlier, that you thought the governor was going to be speaking tomorrow, or the next day?
That's a rumor, but that's what I've heard, yeah.
Rumor?
I mean, I believe it's legit, I'm not sure. I don't know any, I'm not, I don't know anything, but that's what I believe.
Okay.
Yes?
I heard the same thing through somebody, again, it's not formal, and said, the governor wants, going to speak.
The governor's being pressured to do something, and something might be throwing the power back into municipalities, maybe he'll authorize all individual cities to, we don't know what he's going to do, or maybe he'll do a statewide ban, or maybe he'll have heard me tonight speak and go county by county, with metrics connected. I love data, stats, and metrics, so. So I, anyone else can speak, but I, again, not that I have the votes, there were three of us that mentioned that we would be willing to go that path, so we have the votes to do that, if we need to. And again, we welcome Councilmember Freiberg and Aho to weigh in on that one at that time, and maybe at that time, the way the ordinance or motion gets made or something, you all join in, that's absolutely fine. I just want the people of Eden Prairie to know that we're very on top of this, we're very sensitive, we're listening, all five of us, regularly, and we're studying this issue, and we're doing what we think is best for the people of Eden Prairie. Right now, we feel, and I really do, the people of Eden Prairie are in one of the safer areas of this country, that's just, maybe just because of the safer areas of this country, that's just, maybe just because of the numbers, I'm not going to editorialize why, but right now, the trends are not demanding the kind of action in some places, like shutting back down, we're not there yet. We want not to be there, and that's where the mandating mask might make a lot of sense. Anybody?
Yeah, I'm willing to wait for a little bit, to see what does happen, it would be best for the state, and if you have powers, or we can do it quicker than waiting another month, I'm willing to wait. However, I would like to ask everyone in Eden Prairie who cares about their neighbors, cares about their businesses, to start wearing masks. It's not about you, it's about all the people around you that you're protecting from you. And it will let our businesses open, it'll let us do things, it'll let us go to churches, see our friends at a distance, and do more of what we want to be doing while keeping the community safe. And you don't have to look at it, it's about me, because it isn't. PG was right, it's more about keeping your germs from the other people. And no one can know with COVID, I suppose unless you've recovered, that you don't have it. Because high enough percentage of people do have it, are walking around thinking they're healthy, and they're not. So, you know, I wear one when I'm out around other people, it's as simple as that.
I wanted to spell something, too, we all have read a lot on this, and there's a whole lot on the internet right now, and you'll read, this expert, this singular expert said masks don't work, or masks actually hurt people. I've read an article the other day that it hurts people that have any kind of breathing problem. But here's, look at the preponderance of evidence, and look at the preponderance of expert advice, and from the Dr. Fauci's on down, and you will find masks work, period. They may not be 100%, but they work. And there are no, there are no longitudinal studies, because we haven't been at this long enough, on the COVID virus contagion infection rates through masks. But viruses are viruses, they're tiny, but there are studies from the 1920s and 30s on tuberculosis TB, and granted, they were more cloth masks back then, but nonetheless, they showed in studies that 80% of the virus got stopped in a mask because it comes out in droplets of spit. So 80% got stopped from the infectious person by wearing a mask, and 20% was stopped from coming into the non-infected person, so Boy Scouts in the audience, do your math, so .2 times .2 is 4%, so that means 84% of the virus is getting stopped if both people, the infected person and the non-infected person's wearing a mask. There's a lot of data and studies out there, that's why the medical community almost unanimously is in favor of masks right now. So if you're still stuck on hearing some story, or picking some up off the internet, or you heard something on your favorite TV station that masks don't work, go, don't believe that, go out and check, because they do. Now, the reality is that so does staying in your home and never leaving, that's impossible. So the whole mandated mask thing may or may not work across the whole nation, just the fact that it works doesn't mean it's the best idea, but it does work. And we in Eden Prairie, when it gets to the point, and it might be soon, it might even be tomorrow if the governor speaks, when we get to the point that we need to wear this, we need to wear them, and faithfully, and again, do it for others. And somebody the other day wrote me an email and said, "It's my constitutional right that you can't make me wear this." I'm thinking, "Do you drive 55 in a 55 mile an hour speed limit zone?" I mean, of course, government enacts laws that protect each other, protect you from hurting others, and protect others from, wait, did I say that right? You got it. So anyway, it protects everybody, and that's why we are in government, so of course, we can mandate masks, and it does not violate anybody's constitutional right. So, okay, enough with my pontification. I think we're settled with this, we know where we're heading. That's all I've got to say. Mr. Getcho, is there anything else to come before the council today, council anything? Okay, with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, council meeting adjourned. Thank you for your attendance, Boy Scouts especially, well, everyone especially, but especially Boy Scouts.